Did you start live stream?
Yes, we're now starting.
Okay. Okay, good evening, everybody. We are back from closed session. We do have one item to report out on motion by member Sequenza and segment by a member of Marcelo O'Brien. The board voted four to zero to reject claim number two, one, zero, zero, one, nine. Hopefully I didn't read that wrong. Claim number two, one, zero, zero, one, nine. So that's what we have to report out. Next up on our agenda is the pledge of allegiance, and I've got a lot of people to choose from tonight. So I am going to go with Mr. Cannon. Mr. Cannon, can you lead us in the pledge of allegiance this evening?
Of course. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Now we're on agenda item number eight, approval of the agenda. Julie, are there any changes to the agenda this evening?
I do not have any changes.
Okay. Move on to agenda item number nine.
Um, do you, President Jaramelli, do you want to make sure the board doesn't have any approval of the agenda concerns?
Sure.
For the agenda as is?
Do any board members have any questions, comments, concerns about the agenda? Do you want us to vote on this, Julie? Is that the?
Yes, please.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
Second?
Okay, all in favor? Oh, sorry. Student vote, Robin?
Aye.
Full board, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and next we have approval of minutes. Does anybody have any changes to our minutes from February eighth?
We do not.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from February eighth?
Motion to approve the minutes from February eighth.
Second?
Uh, we'll vote. Student vote, Robin?
Aye.
Full board, on favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. We'll move on to agenda item number 10, comments from our student representative. Robin, take it away.
The school reports for the February twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one regular board meeting are as follows. Los Junta's highlights from the week. Online book fair started today. See the LJE website for more details and how to order. Our third and fifth graders are hard at work on their research projects. Third is researching animals and fifth grade gets to choose their own topics. In second grade, our students got to choose books on black history, then do a video or typed review. And in number corner, they are looking at countries on their maps and the differences and similarities in their flags tying into fractions. Upcoming events. Session three of the Parents and Community Series with Dr. Watson is tomorrow night, February twenty-third, from six thirty to eight P M. Site council meeting is February twenty-fourth at three P M. Read Across LJE Spirit Week, March second through the fifth. PTA next Tuesday, March second at six thirty P M. John Miras highlights from the week. Fourth grade is gearing up for trout in the classroom. Eggs get delivered next week. This week, they learned of what colors rainbow trout have and how it camouflages them. The fifth grade classes went on a virtual field trip to the California Academy of Sciences, where they got to participate in a presentation about the sun and its motions around the solar system. Students were very interested in the topic of the solar system, and several students ventured out to watch the live feed of the recent launch of the rover that was sent to Mars. This past August, Quaver Ed announced its partnership with the National Museum of African-American Music. Six new lessons were added to Quaver Music Created From the Museums: From Nothing to Something curriculum. These lessons focus on the banjo, spoons, and the origins and traditions of these instruments. Music students at JME began learning the spoons as a part of their distance learning curriculum. Lucius Spoonman Tally is the artist in residence and our virtual guide to learning the history and practice of playing the spoons. Upcoming events. February twenty-fourth, three fifteen P M, online site council meeting. Virtual book fair, February twenty-second through March fifth. Info is on JME website. ELAC meeting, March second at eight thirty A M. Link is posted on the website under ELAC. John Swett's highlights from the week. Second graders took a virtual field trip to the California Academy of Sciences. Fourth graders took a virtual field trip to Contra Costa Water Department, where they talked about where California's water comes from, how the gold rush and hydraulic mining had devastating effects on the environment, and how students can conserve water. It was an informative and fun interactive Zoom call. Kindergarten participated in a virtual field trip with the California Academy of Sciences to learn more about penguins. It was titled Penguins, Will You Be My Valentine? Upcoming events. Site council on February twenty-third. Virtual book fair this week of March fourth. Morello Park's highlights from the week. Morello Park will be celebrating our love of reading with a spirit week during Read Across America, March first through the fifth. MPE kinders are hard at work with writer's workshop. They're publishing amazing writing to teach others in informational how-to books. You wouldn't believe how many areas they have expertise in. Their favorite parts are adding warnings and helpful tips and reading each step to the class so they can act it out. First grade is doing spirit days like Fort Fridays, Pyjama Day, Purple Days, and more. First grade continues to learn about children of color who have helped to make the world a better place. For example, Sarah Roberts, a five-year-old African-American, who fought for equality in schools in eighteen forty-eight, Boston, Massachusetts, and Jaquiel Jackson, a nine-year-old who started blessing bags for the homeless in twenty sixteen. First grade will be starting March Madness, where we listen to thirty-two books, then vote on our favorite songs, our favorite books, using a bracket to figure out the first grade championship book for twenty twenty-one. MPE second grade students are working on informational reports at this time. They selected a topic of their choice and are about to start researching and note-taking. The topics range from Muhammad Ali, Brontosaurus, Just Dance Game, and lava. The students are really excited about this unit. MPE fourth grade just completed the Bay Milwaukee Research Projects and Essays. We also finished the Sign of the Beaver Historical Fiction Readers Workshop book to learn more about Native Americans. Upcoming events. Session three of the Parents and Community Series with Doctor Watson is Tuesday, February twenty-third, from six thirty to eight P M. Site council meeting, February twenty-fifth at two P M. Read Across MPE Spirit Week, March second through the fifth. Martinez Junior High's highlights from the week. Last week, our eighth graders had a visit via video from the AHS Counseling Department. They covered information about transitioning to high school graduation slash college slash career requirements, and most importantly, course offerings and selection for next year. Digital resources were sent to all eighth grade students and families to review and help to register for classes online. The registration window closes on March first. MJHS had a successful drive-through school picture event. While we had many bull pups come and smile for the camera, we will be scheduling a makeup day in March. Email to follow soon with dates and details. This week marks the start of our eighth graders' campaign week for class officer positions for their ninth grade year. Voting will take place this Thursday, February twenty-fifth. All eighth graders will receive their ballot via email and must cast their ballot by three P M. Upcoming events. Tuesday, February twenty-third, parent slash community session with Dr. Watson, held at six thirty P M. Thursday, February twenty-fifth, site council meeting at two thirty P M. Friday, March twelfth, MJHS ELAC virtually at eight forty-five A M. Alhambra High School's highlights from the week. We had great success with our senior spirit pickup event last week. We are excited to see two hundred of our Bulldog seniors take part in this drive-through event. AHS opened the scheduling window for the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two school year this week. The AHS Leadership Class hosted a virtual student congress meeting today to discuss upcoming events and gather student feedback. AHS would like to congratulate students Robin Johnson and Ken Nguyen, who participated with the California Orchestra Directors Association Kaleidoscope Chamber Orchestra. Robin and Ken participated in two songs in the concert last Friday evening after many Zoom rehearsals with professional players and the composers of the pieces. Upcoming events. The Virtual Bulldog Awards of Achievement Ceremony will be on Thursday, February twenty-fifth at three P M. March first is the start of Women's History Month. AHS Leadership is working on plans for presenting information and homeroom videos. AHS will host Dr. Sinyard on March tenth for the Virtual Superintendent's Honorable Ceremony at one thirty P M. Vicente Martinez, Breone's Independent Study, Martinez Early Intervention Preschool Program, and Summer Programs, highlights from the week. Psychology Club hosted a school-wide presentation from Contra Costa T U P E on vaping, tobacco, and marijuana on February tenth, and will host another school-wide presentation from Mothers Against Drunk Driving on March third. Psychology Club members have been busy preparing a podcast series on relationships, including how to tell if you're in a toxic relationship, how to increase your self-love, and how to have a healthy and loving relationship. Sign up for the VMHS Psychology Club channel on YouTube to see these episodes. MEIPP is grateful for the MEF grant for new playground tricycles and other fun vehicles for our preschool students. Upcoming events. Vicente students are gearing up for two upcoming virtual field trips. On March fourth, junior and senior girls can attend the Seroptimist Get Real Academy, and on March tenth, students can attend the Teens Tackle Tobacco Youth Wellness Conference. The Vicente staff is embarking on embedded coaching from Solution Tree to increase the use of professional learning communities in order to increase the already high level of support for our students. Congratulations to our Vicente and Breone's early graduates for their hard work, determination, and perseverance. Martinez Adult Schools highlights from the week. An unemployed member of our community took advantage of the free resume consultation and interview preparation offered at the adult school, and advised us last week he was offered a position with the county. The school offers these services for free via Zoom to anyone who requests them. Last Saturday, we had a student pass the HISA exam and earn her high school equivalency. One of the current ESL students just enrolled in the CAD program, as well as being student in the high school diploma program. Upcoming events. We are presenting to our ESL students a new course in entrepreneurship that will start this spring. And that concludes the school reports for the February twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one regular board meeting.
Thank you so much, Robin. Now we get to move on to agenda item number eleven, which is our employee organization reports. Do we have any reports from our employee organizations this evening? Stephanie? Nothing?
No, thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to comments from PTA. Agenda item number twelve. Do we have any comments from PTA this evening? Doesn't look like it. So we'll move on to agenda item thirteen, presentations. And we have a educator of the year recognition. Stacy, take it away.
Thank you. Well, good evening. Tonight is one of our favorite times of the year when we have the privilege of honoring those employees who have been selected from their school site as educator of the year. As we begin tonight, each principal will be sharing words of appreciation about their nominee. So without any delay, David, can you please start our slideshow?
I'm Lori O'Connor, and I'm the principal of Martinez Early Intervention Preschool Program, and we would like to congratulate Mary Dominguez. Mary Dominguez has worked harder than ever to ensure our highest need students have consistency and care of programming. She's turned an almost completely hands-on classroom into a supportive virtual classroom for her students and parents. She has jumped, skipped, and backflipped through hoops on a moment's notice to put together our first one-to-one service class, which she collaboratively built the schedule and processed with administrators and colleagues. Congratulations to Mary Dominguez, MEIPP's educator of the year.
Congratulations, Mary.
Good evening, Mike Cannon, principal at John Swett, and we would like to honor Lisa Trapani as our educator of the year. In this year of transition and distance learning, Lisa truly exemplifies excellence in teaching. She is dedicated, flexible, got out of her comfort zone, kept a smile on her face, and was there for everyone in the JSE community. This year, Lisa transitioned from being a fourth-grade teacher at JSE to finding out two days before school she would be teaching kindergarten. She has taken on everything with an open mind and bid such a wonderful light of energy to introduce kindergarteners to John Swett. Lisa is a model team player who is a leader and truly makes John Swett a better place. Congratulations, Lisa.
Congratulations, Lisa.
Good evening, Kathy Frazier, principal at John Muir Elementary. John Muir would like to congratulate Lisa Kirker. Lisa's unwavering commitment to helping all students is reflected in her work daily. She is an advocate for all and shows nothing but care and kindness for her students. One of the things that stands out for Lisa is her enthusiasm toward all students. Lisa's positive can-do attitude helps motivate her students to strive to reach their goals, and they love attending her class. She's such an asset to our school.
Congratulations, Lisa.
Hi, I'm Amy Nichols from principal at Morello Park Elementary. Morello Park Elementary would like to congratulate Caitlin Raymond. Caitlin provides her students with rigor while still providing a kind and caring learning environment. Students thrive in the environment she creates, whether it's in person or in the classroom or virtually. Caitlin continues to learn and grow as an educator to provide the best learning opportunity for her students. She served as a support teacher for the unit to study writing and a science pilot teacher. Caitlin has gone above and beyond for her students and the school community, and we are thankful for her positive contributions to the Morello Park Elementary students. Congratulations, Caitlin.
Very nice. Congratulations, Caitlin.
Hey there, Karen Carlson, principal at Los Junta's Elementary School. Los Junta's would like to congratulate Marcy Savala. Marcy cares deeply about the emotional and academic growth of her students and goes above and beyond to make sure her students are receiving the best on a daily basis by utilizing data and progress to inform her teaching. Mrs. Savala creates opportunities in her classroom where students can thrive in leadership roles, all while mentoring new student teachers, being active on the UDL team, piloting science curriculum, and working collaboratively with sped and intervention to ensure the best for her students. When asked to make pivots in her teaching or in her job, she takes it with grace and applies the direction. Mrs. Savala has made a seamless transition to distance learning, still using data and creating leadership opportunities in her virtual classroom daily. It continues to be a pleasure to work with Mrs. Savala, and we are thankful for all she does for our school, community, and district. Congratulations, Marcy.
Congratulations, Marcy.
Hi, Carrie Cusack, principal at Martinez Junior High School. And MJHS would like to congratulate Laney Leach. Ms. Leach has been an integral part, member of the MJHS staff and Science Department for over twenty-five years. Her positive attitude and caring demeanor have made a huge impact on her students as they navigate their first year of junior high. This year exemplified Ms. Leach's strengths and commitment to our students. Each day, Ms. Leach provides a warm and welcoming environment, works to build and strengthen relationships, develops new and engaging curriculum, and remains a constant source of positivity and support for her students. This year has magnified the passion and care Ms. Leach has for learning and well-being of our MJHS bull pups. Beyond her classroom, Ms. Leach is a valued colleague and collaborator among the teachers and staff at MJHS. The MJHS community has been and continues to be lucky to have Ms. Leach as an outstanding and caring educator. Congratulations, Laney.
Congratulations, Laney.
This is Lori O'Connor, principal of Vicente Martinez High School and Breone School. We would like to congratulate Sabrina Amy as our educator of the year. Sabrina consistently demonstrates an awareness of social emotional needs of all of our students. She has positive relationships with students and effectively contributes to staff efforts to promote and support the mental health of our students. Sabrina is always available to our students, staff, and families. She is always ready to listen and advocate for everyone's needs. She is proactive in her communication and inclusion with families and our community. Great job, Sabrina, and congratulations on being our educator of the year.
Congratulations, Sabrina.
Good evening, Suzanne Murphy, Martinez Adult Education Director. Martinez Adult Education would like to congratulate Judy Savia. Judy is an incredible teacher and a strong advocate for her students. By sharing her best practices and processes she uses to track her students, the entire department is able to offer greater services and support for all students. Feedback from students about Judy is consistently positive and clearly shows the impact she has on the academic experience at MAE. Judy tirelessly supports our students, the department, and the entire MAE community. Congratulations, Judy.
Congratulations, Judy.
Alhambra High School would like to congratulate Mr. Ryan Hussey as our educator of the year. For eighteen years, Ryan has been committed to student learning, leadership, and the overall development of students as productive, caring, and contributing members of our community. He touches every student by routinely checking in, giving them a hundred percent, and making sure that his students feel seen and heard. Ryan presents material in class thoughtfully and pushes his students to engage critically with both current events and course content. In short, his reliability, thoughtfulness, optimism, and sense of humor in the classroom are true strengths that inspire his students to learn. Alhambra would like to congratulate Ryan. He truly knows and exudes what it means to be an Alhambra Bulldog. Congratulations, Ryan.
Good job, Ryan. Congratulations.
And at this time, I would like to add, Mr. Hussey, you have been selected to represent the Martinez Unified School District as MUSD's educator of the year. Congratulations. We will be moving your name forward to the county level. On behalf of the Martinez Unified School District, we congratulate all of you tonight, and we thank you dearly for what you do each and every day.
Thank you so much, and congratulations to all of our winners there and educators of the year, and good luck to Ryan at the next, next level. It's exciting to hear the stories about all of our educators of the year, and I'm sure it was tough decisions at all the sites. And so it's, it's great news and a great honor for, for those who were nominated or selected this year. Thank you so much. With that, we'll move on to agenda item number fourteen, which is staff, board, acknowledgements, announcements, and reports. Before we move into fourteen point one, do we have any announcements from or reports from board members?
Jeremy, this is Courtney. I just want to say again, thanks to all the educators of the year. You guys are awesome, and we're so happy that you're a part of Martinez Unified School District.
Okay, we'll move on to fourteen point one. This is a report about Martinez Adult Education from Suzanne Murphy.
Good evening, everyone. David, is it okay if I share my screen?
Yes, you can go ahead and do that.
Okay. Can you all see my main screen, I'm hoping? Yeah, with the welcome. So anyway, thank you, Board President Janelle, and Board for allowing me this time to present to you some information about the adult school. I know we have a couple of new board members, so I just wanted to just let you know about Martinez Adult Education and changes in our funding that happened a few years ago. The Adult Education Program is funded through the California Adult Education Program. We are not funded through the General Fund or the LCAP. We receive our funding as part of a membership of a consortium, which includes the seven adult schools in the county, the Contra Costa County Office of Education, the Contra Costa Community College District, and being part of that consortium leads to our funding as well as other grants that we apply to and receive that fund adult education. I wanted to share some information about our student populations and our programs over the last couple of years. We have program areas in adult basic and secondary ed, which is our high school diploma program, career training and education, apprenticeship, English as a second language, and then community fee, which is basically programs for personal enrichment, music and band and exercise classes that are supported basically through their fees that they charge for the program. When we were looking at our data, you know, we were really looking to see at the impact of nineteen twenty, and our adult basic and secondary education are our students that receive or need the most supportive services. Adult education has a large group of economically disadvantaged people in the community, and if you think of, it relates to the families that qualify for free and reduced lunch within the district. That's one of the ways we gauge the economic disadvantage in our programs. We noticed back in eighteen nineteen, we only had fifty-three percent. By the end of nineteen twenty, ninety-one percent of our students in our high school diploma program were economically disadvantaged. We didn't want any barriers for these students, and so this year, we've decided as a school community to support them. Many of them take a high school equivalency exam, which there is a fee for. So we have actually bought vouchers so that we can support all of them with this exam without them having to pay for it. We've bought sixteen vouchers so far this year for students participating in the program, and we just had our sixth student pass the equivalency exam. We decided to extend that too to our career education program. There are a lot of industry certification certificates that students need to earn in order to get jobs, so we've extended that, and we're paying for their certification exams. We noticed a decline in our student enrollment in our English second language. A lot of them couldn't participate in distance learning due to different factors. So we actually found out from our school community. We reached out and provided hotspots. We checked out Chromebooks. We checked out laptops. Teachers did extensive training on Zoom and Canvas and really worked on ways that we could keep our student population the best we could and serve them through distance learning as we have been and continue. So just wanted to share some of that information with you. And in adult education at our school site, about seventy percent of the students at our school take advantage of some type of career training or career education, whether it be apprenticeship, a career technical education program, or career readiness. You know, students come in taking career training, or they're in one of our ESL programs or our high school diploma, and they take advantage of one or multiple programs at the school in order to gain employment or better employment. So it's a large program that we have, and again, that's one of the reasons we decided as well to support those students in the program with their industry certifications. In, we offer programs, but one of the things that we offer and has been taken advantage of and is in great need right now is services for students, and not just students, any member of the community or anybody contacting our school via email, on the phone, can receive these supportive services. We have a lot to support people in careers. We have personal resume review, interview training, which we're doing via Zoom. Basically, anyone can reach out to provide and provide these resources. Supportive services are huge. The adult school's always been one to provide supportive services to members of the community. And this September, we actually opened a food pantry supported by Contra Costa Salado Food Bank at our school site. That's drive-through. Much in need so far since September first, we have provided five hundred and ten households and over nineteen hundred individuals. We have provided five hundred and ten households and over nineteen hundred individuals in the community with food. And during that drive-through pantry, we also provide information about, people ask us about rent assistance. They ask us about housing. They ask us about other resources they need, and we're able to provide that during the pantry. It's completely touchless. We just give them information about the school and the resources. We are an America's Job Center, which means we can provide services for people that are unemployed and underemployed. Currently, it's all virtual, but those services have been taken advantage of a lot, especially in normal times, a lot, now much, much more. Partnership agencies are essential with us. We provide, you know, we can refer to these, but these are also referring agencies to the adult school. Climate Development Department, Department of Rehabilitation, Shelter Inc. and VA. All of our training programs are approved. They have resources that they can help people with any fees. Some of our programs have no fees. Many don't, but we receive a lot of referrals from different agencies. Partnerships with Diablo Valley College and Los Madonnas College. Many of our career training programs have courses that are articulated, meaning somebody who comes and takes a class at the adult school can actually earn college credit. We have seven different classes that they can do that within our career training programs, and those are really important links for people wanting to move on to higher education after their training. We're very, we're tied with the Workforce Development Board, working with them a lot on Bounce Back Contra Costa, where we refer a lot of people if they can receive emergency services if they've been impacted by COVID in any way. I wanted to talk to you a little bit and just end with some program initiatives, things we're working on. We've been working with the Vice Principal, Patty O'Malley, at Al Hambrer. We want to look at establishing a parent and guardian English learner program to help them with the school system, a class, actually. We want to help them understand the school system better so that they can better support their students. Maybe help with navigating the learning management systems like Google Classroom, Canvas, and more. We really want to connect the high school students with the career training opportunities at the adult school. If they're eighteen, if they've graduated even before they're graduated, as long as they're eighteen, we really want them to look at, you know, the programs are some short-term great programs, and again, the articulated courses can help them get some college credit. Last thing is we're working with our students, and I've reached out to small businesses in the area. We'd like to create a paid internship and employment opportunity for students in career training, and we specifically like to look for local businesses that have been impacted by COVID. We want to help our students, and we want to help businesses, and we will be able to subsidize some of the wages through Martinez Adult Education. And so with that, if you know of any businesses that are looking for some good employees and, you know, have been impacted, maybe can't afford it, please reach out to me. It's something we really have been moving forward with. So thank you very much for the time. I know this is a busy time. I really appreciate this time to give you some information on the adult school. You can look on our website for more, and I also do share our newsletter with the board when it comes out. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Suzanne. One of the things I had a comment on is, you have so much going on over there and so many great programs. We just, we just need to get, get it out to the community a little bit more so the, our community members know what's going on over there and the opportunities they have over there. So with that, do we have any other comments or questions from our board members? Any?
Yeah, just thank you, Suzanne, for this information, not only for the board, but I think for the community at large. It's, it's good for people to know what's going on, so I appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Anybody else? Okay, we'll open this up for public comments. So this is item fourteen point one. If you have a public comment about agenda item fourteen point one, go ahead and raise your hand. I'll just remind everybody that you have three minutes to speak and just make sure you state your name for all of us. Doesn't look like we have any public comments for this agenda item. So thank you again, Suzanne, so much for that presentation, and keep us posted on, on what we can do to help and what's going on over there. The next, we'll move on to fourteen point two, which is our LCAP update, and Amy Black has the floor. Amy, you might be, if you're talking, you might be muted.
Thank you. Good evening. That's, that's what I said. You didn't hear me. Um, thank you for the opportunity. I know there was a request to start to bring some more data, and I thought that what, what I'd like to do, and then I can, you know, if there's more information that you want me to bring, is we're currently beginning our LCAP process, and a big part of the LCAP process is looking at data with our Executive Advisory Committee to the LCAP and also making recommendations or considerations. And I do want to thank President Jannelli and Board Member Siguenza for being the board representation on our LCAP committee. We really appreciate having our board members there, and we're also very fortunate to have labor group representation and a number of parents. So we're really thankful to have such wonderful stakeholders that are involved in our process. And, and I do want to also highlight that we had a number of our ELAC presidents from our school sites that are also in participation, and that was so wonderful to see that as well. And it was very timely because our first data is looking at our English learner data. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to take you, the data is so big, so I'm going to, I'm going to chunk it and do a staff report over the next couple of board meetings that to align with our LCAP presentations as well. So this is just a table of contents of what you're going to see in the next couple of board meetings today. I'm going to start with EL data, and then I'll bring our in-depth academic data of all our student groups as well as our college and career pathway information, and then I'll end with our climate. So basically, that's school safety and student engagement and parent engagement and, and school culture. So this evening, I'm going to talk a little bit. It's really going to be a high level. I'm just going to share our Martinez Unified English Learner information. So currently, we have three hundred and thirty-two students that are identified as English learners. That's eight percent of our student population. Of that three hundred and thirty-two students, seventeen students are identified as newcomers. So a newcomer is a student that has been in the United States for less than three years, who speaks a language other than English and is a novice English learner. So they have minimal developed oral, which is listening and speaking and written, which is reading and writing skills in the area of English. Another group of students that we have identified, we have eighty-five students that are English learners and also identified as special education students, so that's twenty-six percent of that population. And then we also have a hundred and fifty-four students of the three hundred and thirty-two that are identified as long-term English learners or LTEL. That's about forty-six percent of that population, and an LTEL or Long-Term English Learner are English learner students who have been in our US schools and have completed it for six years. So basically, beginning their seventh year, which is sixth grade, are ident, and they have not met criteria for reclassification. They're identified as long-term English learners. And so for a student to be reclassified as an English learner, they have to, they have to achieve a Level Four on our LPAC, which is our Language, California Language, English Language Proficiency Exam. And students take a summative LPAC every year, so they have to reach a Level Four. They also, in addition to reaching a Level Four, they also have to score proficient or at standard on our SPAC or a CAS test, and they have to have a C minus or better in their English class. And then they, if they meet the data criteria, then it triggers reclassification. My department will send that information out to the teacher. The teacher, it then goes for recommendation. And then also, if the teacher then agrees, yes, this child should be reclassified, then that information goes home to the parent, and the parent provides input as well. So just, it's kind of a lot, but that's, that's how students get reclassified, and then some information about our long-term ELS. And so we, we also just tweaked out the data a little bit, you know, more, just to give you a little more of a snapshot, so of our secondary students. So in our long-term English, our LTEL students, that's fifty-three percent of our students. Eighty-eight percent of those students are LTEL. Forty-two of those LTEL students are also identified as special ed students. Okay, so just, we'll go more deeply in academic data of all subgroups in my, in a future presentation, but we just wanted to focus on English learners for tonight's staff report. So this, this graphic is basically, it gives you a nice indicator. So this was something that we started, we looked closely at our data, and I'll show you what it looks like for Martinez. But the way that the state classifies, so we have an indicator where we look at data, and it's called the California Dashboard. And on the dashboard, there are certain indicators or like color wheels or color bands that basically give districts and LEAs information about how their schools are moving in terms of, it's, in terms of growth. So how, how are we doing as a school district? We want to see students, even though they may not be at standard, California wants to see that students are making progress. So if they make progress, then you'll see our, our dial or our wheel move into another color band. The best color to be in is blue and green. That's what we all strive for. Yellow is usually a maintenance color. When you start to get an orange and red, it becomes an area of concern. School districts that are, they have more than one indicator in the red, then they get identified as for differentiated assistance by the state and the county, and then schools that have two or more categories in red qualify for CSI, which we've talked about. We have Vicente Martinez is qualified as a CSI school, and our district is qualified under differentiated assistance for special education students in the area of grad rate and academics. So, but the way the indicator works for English learner is they actually group our reclassified students with our English learner students to get our color indicator. So if you were to look at our dashboard or any dashboard in California, you'll see the one on the far left. So LEAs, that, that means us, so Martinez Unified that have an EL subgroup. The way that the data was showing on the dashboard is that, okay, so we have, you know, ten percent in the red, forty. So you see kind of more of a, it's kind of more of a spread out percentages of your English learner. But then the question came up, what if we remove our reclassified students? So students that have been, they're fluent essentially in two languages and have met the academic criteria. If we pull out our RFE, that's Reclassified Fluid English Proficient. So our reclassified students from our English-only students, you get a very different picture. So it shows that our, our English, our English language students are now forty percent in the red. So then the question came up, well, what does it look like for Martinez? So here's a snapshot of our dashboard. This is in the area of math. So on the left, you'll see our English learner on the two thousand and nineteen California dashboard. In the area of math, which was our CAS score, we scored yellow, which is positive. Because if you look at this, it shows that our student scores increased. Because we increased, you'll see that our dial moved into the yellow. Yes, we want to see like, okay, sixty-six points below standard. Obviously, we still have some work that we need to do, but we're moving in the right direction. And just for a frame of reference, zero is standard. So zero is standard. Anything above sta, zero is above, below, zero is below standard. But if you pull out our English learners from that number, from that, that dashboard dial and pull out our reclassified student, it shows a different picture. So from this group of two hundred and seventy students, they pull out a hundred and seventy-three that are identified as English learner, and it shows that our students, our English learners are a hundred point two points below standard. They increased a little bit, but that would be actually a category red, so we would be in the red if we were just looking at our English learners. Our reclassified students score very well, six point seven points below with an increase. And then for kind of just a, a kind of a point of reference to see how our English-only students, so our reclassified students actually scored higher than our English-only students in the area of math. So, and then also keep in mind, this is just a cross-section of our students because for academic data, it's third through eighth grade and our eleventh grade students. So it's not all of our EL students, but it gives you a snapshot. So I'm going to show you English real quick. So this is English Language Arts. Again, our, this is positive. We have a fifteen-point increase. Our students are in the yellow. We want to see that. We want to see the dial continue to move towards green and blue. If you pull out just our English learner data, you'll see that we have a different score for them. They're at seventy-three points. It's an increase, so that's positive. But we have a pretty significant gap from our English learners to our reclassified and then our English-only students. So the other piece of data that we collect on our English learners are our language acquisition. So how are they acquiring the language of English? And they do that through the LPAC. So in two thousand and nineteen, that was the last time we had, all of our students were able to take the summative LPAC. And just so you know, that you'll see the numbers are a little bit different, too. You have to have two years of school and two years of data for you to have a learner, learner, English learner progress indicator. So this just gives you a snapshot of how our students did in two thousand and nineteen. So at the bottom, it's students that decreased a level. So you'll see in the parentheses, there's a level one. So there's four levels. You get level one, level two, level three, level four. The state wanted to show some progress, so they have these indicators of level one, level two low, level two high, level three low, level three high, to show that there is, because it's a pretty big range to see if there's movement. So if you have this kind of teal color, it'll show the amount of students that maintain their level. This blue color shows students who maintained a level four. So these could be like our LTEL students that have a level four, but they haven't met the academic requirement. And then purple is students that have progressed at least one level, so they like went from level one to, to L. And then this is just another way to look at the data. So if you look at, this is the way that the LPAC is broken down. So you'll have a performance level. There's oral and written. There's a listening and speaking component that goes into the oral part of the test. And then there's written, which includes reading and writing portion. If you also look at the level four, three, two, one, it'll tell us the percentage of students who scored at a level four, a level three, a level two, a level one. It also gives us, as a district, our overall score, which is a level three. So again, it's just another way to break down the data for us to get a better picture of where our students are falling and where we might need to provide some additional support to get them into reclassification. And then we also just wanted to look at our two, our two thousand and twenty data is a little bit tricky because with COVID shutdown, we weren't able to provide summative assessment to all our English learners, but we were able to do almost all or most of our testing for our elementary level. So we were curious to see if we would see similar data trends, and we, and we do. So basically, it confirms that what we were seeing in two thousand and nineteen, the data trends are very similar in two thousand and twenty and what we need to identify in terms of supporting our English learners. So part of the plan, I know there's a lot of data in a short amount of time. We go deeply into the data in our LCAP meeting. We talk about it. We look at what we notice, what our wonderings are, what other data we need to look at. And then through our team discussions, we look at current and past programs and possible considerations for our new goals, because we are in the process of writing a new three-year LCAP, a new plan. And one of the goals is to have a more specific smart goal or identified goal for our English learner population to make sure that we are meeting the needs. Smart goal or identified goal for our English learner population to make sure that we are meeting the needs of our English learners. And um our L TEL specifically. So this just gives you a quick snapshot of where we are in our committee, our next meeting is March third. We're gonna uh continue to get some more feedback on our EL goal and the action items. And then we're going to dive into our academic and college and career data. Then on the twenty fourth, um we'll collect feedback on uh that data and considerations. And then we'll move into school safety and climate data. And then uh by April, we'll bring, we're hoping to bring forward a draft um draft goals for LCAP. And then from that committee, we'll launch into uh we uh getting additional stakeholder feedback from our parent and community surveys. Uh as well as getting feedback from our students um and also presenting it to D LAC. Uh and then uh we will bring our um our final goals to the board in June. We'll ha- uh host a public hearing and then bring it uh to you for approval as the LCAP is due July first. So that's just kind of our timeline. So I know that was a lot, but I'm happy to ask, answer any uh questions.
Okay, thank you so much, Amy. Board members, you have any questions, comments?
I don't have any questions, I just, I just wanted to recognize, uh you know, there's there's so much, there's so much work. That there is to to be done, um but I really appreciate the efforts that Amy Black and Rene Lopez did. In facilitating the discussions, but also providing a lot of data, the good and the bad. That to begin the LCAP committees in depth discussions. Uh and I also wanted to recognize the members of the LCAP Committee who have taken on this task. And it it really requires a a lot of time and a lot of thoughtfulness, including homework. Uh and most of the committee is made up of our staff members uh and and. A lot of them sit on other committees, so I I just want to recognize um how many people we have who are so dedicated. To doing the work that our district needs to do. Uh and that I I really look forward to to working hard with them and that I appreciate their time over the next couple of months.
Thank you so much.
Courtney?
Hi, Amy, um thank you, and having all this data is really great. And I I served on the LCAP Committee in two thousand fourteen, so I know what a big job it is. There were two figures that really stood out to me, you said that twenty six percent of the Eng- English language learners are also special ed students. And that forty two percent of the L TEL students are special ed, both those numbers seem really high. Is one of the jobs of the LCAP Committee to look at why that is and how we can better serve those students?
That's a great question, um I don't, I wouldn't say it's the job LCAP, that's that's our job as um. You know, as district leadership, um as well as working with our staff. But I think that that's important conversation and something we can look at in terms of where we're identifying certain programs or support. And that can come from LCAP. But um you know, one piece we're also noticing around the special ed numbers is reclassification. And we um need to, we really need to look at, do can we reclassify some of our students um that are in special ed? And then also asking that question of, are they in special ed because of their language? Or are you know, or looking at the other side of that is that they really should no longer be identified as the English language learner. Because of their disability or deficit that identified them for special ed. So there's definitely some more work we need to do in kind of cleaning up our data and making sure we're addressing that. And so I work really closely with uh J- Janelle Iait as well as our Director of Student Services. And that's one of the questions um we're digging into more deeply. So that we have a better understanding of the identification, but that's a great, a great question.
Hey, thank you.
Any other questions, comments from the board? Okay, we'll open up agenda item fourteen point two for public comment. And remember, you've got three minutes and to please state your name uh before you start speaking. It looks like we have one person who wants to make a comment, Willie Mims. Go ahead.
Yes, uh my name is Willie Mims, I'm the Education Chair of these kind of A C P. And I I wanted to say uh hello to the new superintendent, I have not had an opportunity to meet her. But I just, you know, saying hello today. I um I was concerned about the LCAP report. Because I was expecting a a total report that just did not concentrate on the E L L students. But you say it's going to come later, that's fine. There was a question asked about the function of the LCAP Committee. So the LCAP Committee is supposed to set the goals and objectives for the district. And and the LCAP Committee has to be inclusive of not just staff members, but uh uh parents and. Community members too, so I'm just concerned about the makeup of this committee and how inclusive it is. So and and also want to know, what is the process that you have to s- select? Members to uh be on the committee, because I know one parent who lives in Martinez. Who have, who wants to be on that committee, but she has been rejected and I'm not and 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 uh. She's an African American parent, and I I just want to know why is that the case? That's all I want to say, but could somebody answer my questions on any of those? And I'm finished.
Thank you, Willie. Okay, any other public comment for this agenda item? Okay, thank you so much, uh Amy, I know we'll get be getting more reports uh at our future board meetings. And it's a long process for the LCAP this year, uh but we'll move on to.
Jeremy, Jeremy, before we move on, um would it be okay to allow uh Amy at least to address how the makeup of the. Uh LCAP Committee and who's represented on that?
Sure, it Amy, if you want to address that, that issue?
Yeah, sure, I'm happy to, so the LCAP Committee is open to um parents, uh community members. So we put information out um and an invitation to all the school sites. There's also information on our, the homepage of our website, inviting people if they'd like to participate. I I'm surprised to hear that anyone, we, I I'm happy to, like, the more people, the merrier. So yes, please, as many people as possible. Um I would encourage, if there's a parent listening um to contact, it's typically through your uh school site principal. That is how representatives are, um they identify themselves and then they give their name to to me. However, I'm also to happy to take um direct emails um for people that are interested in being uh on the committee. Uh so you can email me directly and um our makeup typically, we um we we have to make sure that we. Invite um you know stakeholders in our community as well as parents and most specifically um. Parents of homeless and foster youth students, um English learners and uh low socioeconomics. Those are student groups that are also receive additional L C F F funding. Um and right now, um our committee does fulfill uh those requirements. However, I'm happy to to um again, open up to anyone that's interested or parent that's interested in being a part of that. Conversation or that committee, it's not too late, we just got started, um and our next meeting is next week. So could reach out me to me directly and I can provide that information and add you to the committee.
Thank you so much, Amy, okay. We'll move on to agenda item fourteen point three, um before we uh before I turn it over to Julie. I would just like to say, I know I've received a lot of uh emails regarding this particular agenda item. And I have uh responded to many of those emails and I promise to uh continue responding to those emails as well. I'm hoping that Julie's uh presentation tonight will answer a lot of questions as well, so why don't we get started, go ahead, Julie?
Great, thank you, Dave, do you mind throwing up the uh presentation on the screen, please? Great, go ahead to the next slide, please. Okay, thank you, um I am very excited to talk tonight about kind of reopening status and where we are. Would like to uh first acknowledge the hard work again of Helen Rossi and Jared Rudell. Our covid nineteen safety plan has been approved by the County Public Health Department. And so that is fantastic news, we have received clearance for them, from them, and we are set to go with our covid nineteen safety plan. We are continuing to work with our labor partners uh to reach agreement uh to return for in-person learning. We have a tentative agreement right now uh with our um M E A crew. What's going to happen right now is they are reviewing this M O U with their membership. And um we will hopefully have a ratification here soon in the in the near future, so that's great news. We're continuing to negotiate with C S E A and we are meeting with them tomorrow, uh we are moving forward, folks, so all good news. We've been very busy with elementary scheduling, we have taken all the commitment letters that families have addressed. And we are trying to schedule our students into the A M P M sessions at this point. I know there's a lot of concern and we have received a number of emails about trying to keep teachers and students together. Um unfortunately, that is not the case for every situation, so I want to address that um right up front. We are doing our best to maintain that relationship, but unfortunately, it is not going to be possible to keep every student with um their teacher at this point. Just because of demands, some folks want to remain a distance learning and some folks are um ready to return to in-person learning. We are working on our training videos and so one of our requirements is that we have to do training videos for our staff and students. And so those will be forthcoming, uh again, kind of getting all the dialogue, making sure we have all the right um information. And folks understand how to wash hands correctly, what it's going to look like, and if you're not feeling well, please don't come to school. So we're going to have a lot of specific directions for folks to uh follow. What is, what do you need to do to have a screener, so we're going to have a screening application before your child comes to school. You have to fill out a quick application on your phone to say, nope, we don't have any symptoms, we're good to go, we haven't been in contact with anybody who's been infected by covid. Nobody in our house has covid nineteen, so all that, all that quick information is coming your way. Vaccine distribution, vaccines, the vaccine distribution has been um challenging to to say it best. And I want to thank um our union leadership, I want to thank Brenda, uh it's really helped kind of get some of the word out for vaccines. Our County Public Health um is getting ready to help uh vaccinate some of our educators here. Um and so we're very excited that uh vaccine distribution is on its way and that's great, great news. Um and this week, we are going to, uh by the end of this week, we will have our secondary commitment letters out to families at the secondary level. At our middle school and high schools to uh determine if your students will be coming back for in-person learning or if they choose to remain on distance learning. And next slide, please. One of, one of the other uh big pieces that I want to address is it received a lot of um information about making sure the board is going to take a vote to reopen. The board doesn't need to take a vote to reopen, the district has already been directed by the board to reopen schools when it's safe to do so. So back in October, uh the game plan was to open originally, I believe January fifth was our date. Unfortunately, the stay-at-home order came into play and that 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 threw a wrench into all of our plans. Um and then again, with the changing guidance that is continually coming from the state. There's, there's, we missed an opportunity to open in the red tier and so that's kind of delayed our reopening um at this point. But again, the board does not have to take any additional action, they have directed the district to open when it's safe to do so. And we are in that process of doing so, so the board has told me to get schools open. What we are doing is we're monitoring our case rate numbers. And so we are um, we are looking good, our case rate numbers continue to go down and that's fabulous news. Today, our adjusted case rate number is thirteen point six, that's exciting, exciting stuff, so great, great news. And I know everybody wants to know, what's the official date for hybrid learning, you said, you told me you're starting in elementary learning, what is that going to be? So the process right now is we're putting all our ducks in a row. And um we are waiting for our agreements to be ratified by the labor partners, by our labor partners. And so that's going to happen soon, I have every, you know, I'm very confident that, um I think our negotiating teams have done really good work. And so I'm very optimistic and excited about that information. Um and I'm hoping in the next few weeks or so, we get the ball rolling, I'm sorry, I don't have a definitive date for you yet. But I'm very optimistic in the next few weeks that we will have, be able to tell you what day we're starting. The the one, the part that's a little bit more challenging is the secondary reopening. The secondary, again, numbers are trending downward and that's fantastic. So um the good news is the red tier, we need to get to that that case rate at seven. And we have to stay there for five consecutive days, now this, this can be challenging, could this can take up to potentially three weeks. I cannot get around this at this point, you know, we we were talking to our public, our our um, the California, I'm sorry. The Contra Costa Health Department to say, is there any way that we can potentially make things go quicker? The tiers and when it went to purple, we didn't have to be in a certain tier for two weeks for things to happen. So there's still a lot of debate and dialogue, so I apologize that I don't have the exact date that we're starting secondary as well. I know I'm getting a lot of emails from family saying, are we coming back at all? It is my absolute intention to come back this year with um some hybrid learning for our secondary levels, absolutely. But I have to wait until the the case rate hits that seven number for five consecutive days. So don't worry, we are constantly watching those case rate numbers. And again, I just want to reiterate, the board has already directed us to reopen schools, so there's not an additional vote that or anything that needs to happen. We're going to reopen schools once we get all the pieces in place. Okay, next slide, please, David, thank you. One, uh new information is coming to us daily and just kind of want to give folks a quick heads up. More information will be forthcoming on this, uh because we're still trying to figure out uh new announcements. So on Friday, the governor announced that sports and some contact sports will be eligible to begin. And so we are currently offering um sports that were in kind of purple tier that we could open. We have golf and tennis and cross country and swimming is coming on board. But there's some new information about contact sports and we are pouring through all that information. Our high school principal, Mr. Chamberlain, and our athletic director, Mr. Otola, are trying to find out information. And again, I will provide that when it becomes more available. We have a lot of work to do around that as well, and again, I I've got to be very clear, my number one priority is bringing our students back to campus. To the educational setting and and sports are extremely important to you, please, don't, we're we're working on both ends. But uh really got to make sure we've got kids coming back to class. The new guidance talks about testing cadences prior to competition, we need to figure that out. And an additional informed consent for folks, for our students, athletes that are going to be playing um the high contact sports. Okay, next slide, please. Kind of where we are, what 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 are absolute next steps, or I just want to kind of reiterate this, we are waiting for ratified agreements. Um and so we're we're working towards that, again, we meet with C S E A tomorrow. Our um M E A Martinez Educators Association is taking back kind of the TA that we have and talking to their membership. We're constantly looking at those case numbers, um they're glued to my computer, I am taking notes every single day. Again, the letter for commitment to um come back in hybrid or in person for secondary will be forthcoming this week. And so then we'll begin our scheduling uh for our secondary students. Wanted to make one comment about Woodbridge, we've we've had um some challenges with our students who are attending the Woodbridge uh daycare center. And um there's some concern about students who are uh working, who are attending Woodbridge right now, being able to take in-person learning with us. And uh we've kind of talked to the county, we've called numerous uh organizations, trying to find out. If there is some way that we can make this work for both parties. Again, my conversations with County Public Health uh in 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 our California guidance. There's nothing that restricts students from being in two different areas, if they're attending daycare or in-person learning. However, this is a decision that is going to be made by the daycare provider. So Woodbridge is its own entity, while they use our facilities, I I do not control Woodbridge. And so um that's, that's a decision that their director is going to make, whether or not that uh we can, we can kind of share our students. So some students may have to remain in distance learning um that for the information that I've gathered gathered thus far. And um again, I will be sending out a a letter, another superintendent letter, either tomorrow or the next day. Kind of letting folks know all this information, kind of summarizing everything that we've said. And uh just trying to keep everybody abreast of the information. And so that is, let me see if I didn't double check my notes, if there's anything else that I need to um clarify. Couple of questions that I did want to address that I forgot to put in the slide, got some questions about testing for our students. Um I want to make sure our families know that we will offer testing for students, but it is a not a mandate. I cannot require any student to test if the family is not comfortable with covid nineteen testing. So that's, it'll be an option for families who would like to do that, but if not, that's okay, your child will not have to be tested. And the other question, I had some question about mandating vaccines for children to return. At this point, there is no vaccine for children under sixteen at this point, so there will be no requirement for vaccines. And that's a discussion later down the road, so at this time, there is no mandate that students must be vaccinated before they return to school. I'm trying to think, those are some of the big questions that I was trying to answer over the weekend. So I hope that helps and I hope folks kind of have. So I hope that helps and I hope folks kind of have an understanding that we are getting closer and closer every day to reopening. And I appreciate, I just want to acknowledge the hard work of our labor partners. I want to acknowledge our team. Everybody is working diligently to try and do their best to try and be everything for everyone. And it is, it is a challenge. We know folks have some concerns about wanting to keep their teachers and we get that and boy, do we appreciate that. We understand that's a wonderful thing. That's a wonderful thing to hear that of course you want to remain with your teachers. We're doing our best to accommodate folks, but there will be some challenges there. And I think, Dave, if you could hit the next slide for me, please. Thanks. I believe that's it. And does the board have any questions for me?
Thank you so much, Julie. I just want to start off by saying, thank you. It's exciting that we've got the COVID-19 safety plan approved. I'm happy to hear that we're making progress with our labor partners. And it sounds like we are getting really close to being able to come back, to having at least our elementary kiddos on campus as soon. So I don't have any questions. Do any of the other board members have any questions, comments? Courtney?
Yes. Hi, Jeremy. I do. Julie, Dr. Senyard, thank you for that presentation. I have two quick questions. The first one is, I believe we were to receive about 3.6 million in CARES funding. Is that right?
Yes.
And how much have we received and have we spent it?
I'm going to, I'm going to defer to Helen on this question. I believe we've received about $2 million and I'm sure it could be 2.2.
2.6 million dollars.
Good thing I asked Helen. Helen, I'll let you.
We received 2.6 million dollars. We have another million that we've been told we're going to get. We have not gotten it yet. I've spent in preparing schools and getting everyone what they need from student devices, all the way through to teacher devices and HVACs and PPE and everything else you can think of. We've spent about 2.2. I've held a little bit, maybe 2.3. I've held a little bit back because I don't know what I don't know once the kids come. So I didn't want to be caught short should this next million not get here in time for opening. I don't like to spend money before we get it, so.
And do we have any ETA on the, on the million or is it just?
No.
Whenever they feel like sending it to us.
It hasn't been released yet. I know it's coming, but it hasn't been released yet.
Okay, thank you. And, um,
I want to assure you, we have everything that we need to go ahead and open. And I can think of ahead of time, that we can think of ahead of time, so.
On, on the Woodbridge issue, I just want to make sure I'm clear because I did see a lot of communications with the county. We, it's, it's not, I, I just wanted to make sure because how you phrase it was a little bit confusing. The, we are not saying that Woodbridge kids can't come to hybrid learning. Our understanding right now is Woodbridge has decided that hybrid learning kids cannot come to Woodbridge. Is that right?
The hy- hybrid learning students cannot partake in Woodbridge and do hybrid learning with us. That's, that's the decision. So based on licensing requirements apparently from Woodbridge, I've tried to kind of find some information about the licensing requirements. Again, nothing that I can find right now precludes students from attending Woodbridge and, and then attending our hybrid learning. However, this would be a decision that's, you know, that entity would get to make.
Okay, understood. Thank you. I know you, you've been working really hard on that issue. Every, all the negotiating teams have been working hard. Thank you, teachers. Thank you, classified employees. And I also wanted to thank the parents because I know this has been really difficult for all of us. And, and thank you for all your hard work also.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments from the board?
I have a few comments. So I want to echo, of course, thank you so much to the, to the staff who've been working hard with our labor groups on negotiation. And I know you're right now in the middle of the very daunting task of creating a new master schedule. And I've seen a lot of these master schedules built, most of them in Helen's office, but none I'm sure like the one being created now. And it, I know it's not an easy task. So thank you for your continued work on that. And I've, I, I just want to address that I've had really the privilege of speaking with so many teachers and parents over the past few weeks through email and phone calls. And I even saw a couple of people at farmer's market this week, which was great. So really thank you for staying engaged and for your questions and concerns. I, the thing that I've really gathered from this is that there's, no one really agrees on how and when our schools should open. But I am encouraged because it feels like one thing that everyone can agree on is that we all want our kids. And so it's, it's understandable that emotions are running high because of course we care about our kids' mental and physical health more than anything in the world. And so I want to address that that's, that is why we've worked hard to create schedules that allow students to remain in full distance learning for those families who feel that's the best option for them or to return in a hybrid model. And I've also spoken to a lot of people who say hybrid's not good enough. And I, believe me, I'm ready, I'm ready for that day when we can have a full return to school. But we do still have a lot of state and county restrictions that we're up against and there's really nothing we can do about that. So I do look forward to that moment as soon as, as soon as it can possibly come. I'm ready for that for my own child and for everyone's kids to be safe and healthy and on campus. And finally, I kind of want to give a shout out to students who I know are exhausted. I know parents are exhausted too, but I, I think we sometimes forget. Like I think about my own six-year-old and when I get frustrated with him, I feel bad and horrible and you know, I, I want to just give a shout out to you because I know this is hard and no one ever has done this before you. And so we are working hard to get you back, but you guys are doing awesome. And so thank you so much.
Thank you, Annie. Any other questions, comments from the board? Okay, we'll open this up for public comments. Just remind everybody that we're doing, it's a public comment for agenda item 14.3. So go ahead and raise your hand if you have a public comment. When I unmute you, please tell us your name and you'll have three minutes to speak. First up, it looks like we have Casey Farwell. Casey, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Casey Farwell. I have a kinder and a second grader at John Sweat Elementary. I am reaching out to our board today to ask some questions as to why we are dragging our feet as a district and getting our students back into the classrooms. Tomorrow marks day 14 of when Contra Costa County and the State Health Department deemed it safe for classrooms TK through sixth grade to reopen for in-person instruction. We currently have over 60 private schools operating in person in our county, as well as surrounding public school districts that include Walnut Creek, Lafayette, Maraga, Arinda, Danville, and San Ramon. Why does Martinez Unified not have a return date to reopen when it is deemed safe to do so? Our district was granted 3.6 million dollars in COVID funds to get our classrooms open safely. Yet here we are still forcing our students to sit behind the computer. But after last week, as a parent, I am done forcing my six-year-old to sit behind the computer at a one hour and 25 minute attempt at an education being provided by MUSD. Virtual teaching is nowhere near what these children get out of a classroom setting. I, along with several other families, are currently researching all of the other options to remove our children from the district. As sadly, so many of us have lost hope for you to step up and do what is best for these students. You're taking away so much from all of these children by your lack of leadership to get our classrooms open. And as far as negotiations go with your labor partners, this should have already been handled considering the safety metrics have been met. So what is the holdup with getting MOU signed and a reopening date in place? From all that I've heard over the last several board meetings, it seems negotiations are held up somewhere, which leads me to believe these negotiations may no longer be over safety. The fact we are still discussing in-person learning in February is a failure on your part. Also, a huge concern out of our community is the lack of transparency from the district. We need more transparent communication on what is happening here instead of being dragged along for this ride. Maybe you fear more would leave the district if you were honest with them about high school not having a chance to reopen this year and that we're looking at hybrid come fall. I'm not sure your motive behind what is happening here, but I have come to realize it does not prioritize the students.
Okay, thank you, Casey. Casey, were you done? Okay, we'll move on to our next public comments. Quinn Niomata, I apologize if I butchered your name there, but go ahead. Quinn? Quinn, go ahead. Okay, Quinn, you have your, you have your hand up. You're unmuted. Go ahead. Quinn, did you have a public comment? Okay, we'll try to go to somebody else. Quinn, stick around if, if you want to make your public comment. But now we'll move on to Jenna Von Rantzen. Jenna, go ahead.
Hello, my name is Jenna Von Rantzen. I have a second grader and a sixth grader here. And I just have so many questions, but you know, I would like to know why we missed the reopening date. And I also would like to know what is the holdup that the union or the labor partners are asking for? What's the holdup and why we haven't reopened? And also what are the county restrictions that is holding us up when there are so many other schools in our county that are open currently?
Thank you, Jenna. Up next, let's try Quinn again. Quinn, you're up.
Hello, can you hear me?
There you go.
Oh, there we go. Okay. Hello, my name is Quinn Nematka. I'm in sixth grade and I have a few things to say about distance learning. Seeing the months pass by while looking at a screen day after day has taken a serious effect on me and my loved ones. I don't want to live in a world where the only education for students from now on is through YouTube videos. That's it. Way too often our teachers bring us into class, take attendance, and we watch a video. And just like that, we're gone, off to the next class. I don't even know for sure who's in each of my classes. Most of them I've never even met. This does not work. This was supposed to be my first year in junior high, my first year in the drama program and my first year learning music and how to play an instrument. Those things are either impossible or like with music incredibly challenging without sharing a room with my teacher, of course. My parents have even talked about moving me into a private school so I can actually be in a classroom again. Sixth grade is so different from anything I've ever done. And getting used to the assignments has been super hard for me. The only time I really get to talk to my teachers about missing assignments is through office hours. But even that, it's complicated and doesn't compare to seeing them in person. For school to open in person is the opportunity that we need to revive this county. Well, for what it used to be. At least what's left of it. And the memories that I have before this virus. Please consider all that we've lost and give us what we need as soon as possible. I never thought I'd say this, but I really miss getting up every day and going to school. Please give it back to us. Thank you for listening.
Thanks, Quinn. Up next, we have Anna Marie. Anna Marie, go ahead.
Hi, Anna Marie Avila Farias. I just wanted to say, I wanted to speak on the item before and I had my hand raised. So I'm not really sure if you guys are experiencing technical difficulties, but it was rather frustrating not to be acknowledged for the previous item. And also you might want to look at a system that allows us to, all of us view to kind of correct these problems. So I don't know when I can speak on that item again since it passed already.
Anna Marie, I'm, I'm sorry about that. I must have missed it, but why don't you go ahead and speak on 14.2 if you would like?
Yes, thank you. And I apologize for taking up this time on this item. I, I just wanted to bring up on the English learners that I was really curious on the stats. It said roughly about 300 children were in the program and that there tend to be families that have been in the country three years or, and I would like to see more stats around that because I find those numbers interesting and not really matching up. In particular, that children who are born here that are simply bilingual, which is a huge distinction that I feel keep getting lumped into English learners. And we really need to stop that narrative. We need to celebrate bilingualism and not create it as a second language obstacle for people. And so I think there needs to be more data gathering around really distinguishing families who are truly immigrants learning a second language versus children who are bilingual. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna Marie. Sorry about that.
No problem.
We'll move on next to Scott O'Hara. Scott, go ahead. Scott, it looks like you're still muted.
Yeah, hi, thank you. I had a few things I was going to say, but actually Casey did a much better job at expressing what we feel about the situation than what I had written. So I just want to say thank you, Casey and Jenna. And I agree 100% with what they were saying.
Thank you, Scott. Next, we'll move on to Deanna Bloom. Where'd you go, Deanna? Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Deanna Bloom. I am a parent of a TKer and a first grader at John Sweat Elementary. I promised my daughter that I would come on here and speak on her behalf every day. She asks me when she will get to be able to see her classroom, when she will be able to sit in a desk. You guys talk about missing, having to change classes or change teachers. We have never met our teacher. We are doing our best at getting an education, but as far as I'm concerned, this is a failure. I really appreciate what, the way that you convey your information. Superintendent Senyard, I, I appreciate the enthusiasm and everything that you're bringing to us, but I still have to tell you that this is just not good enough. I heard you say that we missed the red tier. That's unacceptable. You said in a couple of weeks, we will have a date. So that leads me to believe we will be waiting even longer. This is unacceptable and we are failing our children. We are absolutely failing them and I want you to know this. So we can do better than this. I know that we can. In light of what we heard last week from neighboring school board meetings, morale is really low and this has got to change. We need action and it should have been yesterday. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you, Deanna. Next, we'll move on to Cynthia Webster. Cynthia, go ahead.
Hi, first of all, I want to start off with the fact that I've had kids in the Martinez Unified School District for 11 years. I spent seven years on the John Sweat PTA. I spent six years on the Board of Martinez Education Foundation. As you know, the PTA is about parents working with teachers, parents working with each others, parents working with teachers on behalf of a bunch of students. Similarly, MEF is about money, grants, raising money for not one school, but all of the schools. So I know what it's like to be on boards and to do things on behalf of kids. So I was a volunteer, just like some of you are, okay? And I feel that in, when you volunteer, when we're in these situations, people have got to meet halfway. I'm not really sure what, what the, what the holdup was. I see and I was pleased to hear that a tentative agreement was reached. I'm still worried about that tentative agreement. When will we know? If, if that was approved, if it was approved, when will we go back into school? The fact is, both sides need to bend. Both sides need to meet each other in the middle. And as we all know, in negotiations, not always both sides are equally happy, but we have to do what it takes. What has been disappointing here is that you, Martinez Unified School District and teachers unions have had precedents. There have been schools all over California and now local schools that have kids back in the classroom. I'm, just like I tell my, my kids on simple tasks, look and listen, sweetie, if, if, if they can do it, you can do it. And that has been extraordinarily frustrating that if other school districts And that has been extraordinarily frustrating that if other school districts can do it, why can't we? I want Martinez Unified School District to be a positive example. I, as you know, indicated in the beginning, supported Martinez Unified School District and everything it was for, but now I feel that we are last. Do we really want to be known that as that? Is that what you guys want your legacy to be? Oh, Martinez Unified School District is one of the last ones in California to get their kids back on campus. I don't think that's what you want your legacy to be. I appreciate all of the hard work and determination. Those of you who have been working on this daily are doing, but it has to continue. And, and you cannot stop until we set people step foot back inside the classrooms. Also, I want a shout out to the teachers. I only know I have 20 seconds. I hear you. I hear you teaching my kids. I know you guys are doing a great job, but we still have to do more unfortunately to get our kids back in the classroom. But thank you so much to those teachers for their hard work during this distance learning. Get them back.
Thank you, Cynthia. Todd Navarro, you're up next. Go ahead, go ahead, Todd.
Great, thanks, Jeremy. On behalf of myself and my family and the community members, again, hats off to the school district for the progressive work that they've made in pulling the approval for the safety plan to return to campus. One of the things that concerns me and it's been echoed repeatedly during this meeting is the lack of transparency. One of the things that we've heard throughout the media over the last couple of weeks is that even though we have guidance from the state, particularly with regards to our elementary schools, being able to reopen at a certain threshold, is that our labor, our labor teams are negotiating guidelines outside of those guidelines for when they believe that it's safe to return, and it's further delaying our ability to step foot back on our campuses. It's extremely imperative and Dr. Senyard, it's good to hear you say that once you have our elementary schools back on campus, that you're going to push to have our secondary schools on campus at some point this school year. It is extremely imperative that we get a foot in the door this school year, the 2021 school year at our secondary schools so that we have zero excuses come fall of 21, 22 for getting all of our kiddos back on campus for the start of the next school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Todd. Next up will be Amy Slovic. Amy, go ahead.
Hi, thank you. And so I, I kind of come from a couple of different perspectives here. The first is, is that I'm a registered nurse and I'm a public health nurse. The second is, I'm a mom of four kids who are in the district. And I'm trying to work and hold down pretty close to a full-time job while trying to make sure my kids stay afloat. Also, three of my kids have special needs. And so it's particularly difficult trying to make sure that they get what they need because really that what's in their IEPs isn't being met in distance learning. So I say all that as a parent is extremely empathetic to how hard it is to have kids at home and kids not being able to get really what they need despite how hard everybody is working and the teachers are working. And I have to say, all of our teachers have been putting in a Herculean effort. But I do have concerns about people coming back before it is safe. What my concern is, is that we're still seeing exceptionally high numbers of, of the disease out in the community. So I don't think that they're going to see big issues with kids getting serious infections or even symptomatic, but what we can see is that kids who cannot get a vaccine, there's no vaccine for it yet, can spread that on to teachers and can spread it on to other family members and community members. And so I'm more worried about the amount of kids going back and then them kind of being vectors and sped and spreading the disease. And I've seen horror, I mean, I've had so many patients die. I've had colleagues die. I've had family members die. And I just, to me, if, if it's a matter of staying home just for a few more months, will we get more widespread vaccines out and get people? We're just getting more of it now and it's going to take, you know, if we get more of the vaccines in over the next two to four weeks. And then we start working on getting the people, get the first shot, get the second shot, and then have the three to four weeks until they have some immunity after that. And we have the numbers, you know, further down. I would rather us with the older kids, at least the middle and the high school, finish out the year on distance learning, work on getting widespread, you know, what we call herd immunity or getting more and more people immune and prevent the spread going all over the community and just shutting us down again. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Amy. Next up will be Katie McLaughlin. Katie, where'd you go? Go ahead. Katie, it looks like you're still muted. Katie, did you want to address the board?
Hi, can you hear me now?
There you go.
I know it sounds like a commercial. Can you hear me now? Hi, good evening. My name is Katie McLaughlin and I'm a parent of two Alhambra High School students. And to be honest with you, what I have wanted to say and needed to say has already been said. I'm very pleased to hear that we have a tentative agreement with our union, with our, with the labor partners, because it's absolutely unacceptable not to have one. As there are clear guidelines by the local, state and federal officials. And we all have a choice. And we can make it, you know, a choice to stay home or we can go back to school. And for those of us that want to go back to school, there's clear guidelines and it's, we have the roadmap there. We just need to follow it. And yes, we want to be back by the end of the school year, but also we have sincere concern of how long it's been taken the elementary schools to get back. They were directed back in the summer to get back, you know, go back to school, get on campus. You know, are there going to be further delays? And, you know, are we going to follow the tiers as, you know, it's, you know, if there's a prescribed rollout? And I think again, just the transparency, if I can just echo that, maybe we can include that, what the roadmap is, or if there are any other barriers of allowing us to go back if we are in the orange or the yellow. Are there any other hurdles that we need to get over as, as a district? And then also just greater transparency on, it was really good to hear from Helen Rossi about the money received and what's used and what's being reserved. I can't echo enough that enhanced communication and transparency is key. And again, I'm thrilled to hear that there's a tentative agreement. And I hope that that goes through because if it doesn't happen, if we don't get back in the classroom, when we get back into the red tier on day six, we have let our children down. You have let our children down. So I hope that the, our union representatives can pass that through with their members. And again, thank you all to our leaders and teachers. We do appreciate you. We know this has not been easy. But I think we just kind of come together, have greater transparency. And people can make the choices that they want to as a family to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Next up will be Elaine Mano. Elaine? Go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Elaine.
Okay, hi, good evening. My name's Elaine Mano. I have a second and fourth grader at Morello Park Elementary. I just wanted to echo Casey Farwell's statement. She basically said everything I'm thinking and said it really eloquently. I think one of the big things that I do want to stress is that I know that our teachers are working their butts off. And I thank them for all that they are doing. And it's unfortunate, it's just not enough. At least it isn't for my children. My biggest concern right now is losing faith in our district and being open and for reals in the fall. And feeling the, that we're going to be forced out of here because we can't sustain this type of school environment in our home much longer. So that, that's what I'm really concerned about. So I think, you know, following the science here, where children are not the biggest vectors of this disease and having our safety protocols in place, we have a plan. I'm thrilled to hear that there is a tentative agreement with the labor partners. So I'm just hoping that, that it works out and our kids can be back as soon as possible. One other thing I just wanted to put out there is whether or not there will be opportunity for summer school for kids who need extra support this summer. And to get them to where we want them to be or where they should be by the time that they end whatever grade level they're at. That I think will be really important for all of our, the members of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Elaine. And next up will be Kelly Gilbert. Kelly, go ahead. Sorry about that, Kelly, go ahead.
Hello, my name is Kelly Gilbert. I am a parent at Morello Park Elementary. I'm saddened to even be commenting on this topic still. Most of our neighboring districts have reopened. How, after 11 months, are we still in the same position? I'm baffled on the fact that we are so behind. Safety measures have been met. What else do you want as a parent? Or we as parents really want to know. We've been left in the dark. Give everyone options. My kids are watching their friends going back to school and asking me why they can't. We all want to know, what are your plans for fall? Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Maria Anderson, you'll be up next. Where'd you go? There you go, Maria.
My name is Maria Anderson, parent to a seventh grader, a second grader at John Sweat, and another Red Runner to beam. I've been an invested MUSD parent over these years, but I have to say that the handling of COVID has been a disappointment for our district. For months now, the medical experts that we rely on for decision-making say to open schools. On February 9th, the American Academy of Pediatrics released an urgent call to reopen schools and I quote, "We know how to keep teachers, staff, and children safe on school campuses." Hundreds of schools and school districts have been able to do this in other parts of the country, end quote. The CDC director has said that schools can safely reopen and that safe reopening does not suggest that teachers need to be vaccinated. She said that schools should be the first to open and last to close in a pandemic. And thankfully, here in Contra Costa County, we've opened vaccinations to teachers. At the last school board meeting, trustee Wright told us that from the moment you close schools, you've been working to reopen them. Yet here we are, approved by the state and the county to open, and we're not opened. I ask if the state and county say to get back to school and you claim to have been working towards reopening this entire time, why aren't our kids in the classroom? Apparently, our last impediment is a signed MOU with our labor unions. Negotiations have been ongoing for weeks and yet families have no information on what is holding us back. We ask for transparency as to why our kids are not in the classroom. Again, we are hearing from national experts, state government, county government, that kids can be in school. But all we get from our local elected representatives is lip service. Please give us more information. Furthermore, we know that school closures is associated with worse life outcomes in every avenue of life, including shorter life expectancy. On November 12th of 2020, the Journal of American Medical Association published research on the long-term effects of school closures. They found that closures will result in more years of life lost than had schools been open. That's due to the many negative life outcomes associated with educational disruption. And at the same time that MUSD schools are closed, districts in wealthier areas such as Silicon Valley area, Marin, Napa, San Ramon, even Walnut Creek have their kids in the classroom. Meanwhile, MUSD academic performance has been steadily declining. For parents that are interested in those numbers, you can see them on schooldigger.com. In 2011, MUSD performed better than 74.2% of other California districts, and that's a good number. However, since then, it's declined every year. It's gone down to 73.4, 67 and a half, 66 and a half, all the way down to 53.3% in 2019. That's a 20-point drop. Let's help our kids improve their academic performance. Let's get them back in the classroom. Right now, they're among the last returns, setting them up to fall farther behind. We are failing them. Let's get our kids back in the classroom and back on the track to success.
Okay, thank you, Maria. Next up is somebody by the name of Jake. Jake, let us know what your name is and go ahead. Jake, you're still muted. Jake, if you want to address the board, go ahead. Looks like you're still muted.
There we go. How about that?
There you go, Jake.
All right, thanks, Jeremy. I'm Jake Jameson. I'm a father to eighth grader at MJHS and a fifth grader and first grader at La Suntis. None of them have seen the inside of the classroom for 11 months. Despite the common warning for parents to limit their kids' screen time, my kids are spending four to five hours a day in front of a screen for online instruction. Now, it's a, it's clear that this SARS-CoV-2 and its numerous variants are and will remain endemic. So this can't be the new normal. I'm thankful that online schooling has been here when we needed it, but it's the setback simile for the real thing in class instruction. If anyone on the board would disagree with this assessment, then great. I recommend an agenda item in other business. We should just auction off all the school facilities and terminate all the teachers and administrators and sign everybody up for Khan Academy. But everybody here can agree that the students are experiencing deficits in their education so long as we continue to stay shuttered from the play. We've met the criteria in the county to open. I have to say A and PM hybrid, it's a nightmare scenario for us. We could wind up with one kid at AM, one at PM. That's why my wife and I decided to stick with online instruction, not because we don't want our kids to go back to school. We do. But because A and PM could make it impossible for us to ferry our kids to school and back while maintaining a full-time work schedule. Need to open schools. 11 months is more than enough time for the district to have made the necessary preparations. Essential workers, such as myself and ironworker, we've been working the entire time, throughout the entire pandemic. So, you know, I think we can get a move on with it. The concerns, other people text on here, children contracting the virus. We know that they're low risk for, you know, being susceptible. They're low risk as vector. Teachers contracting the virus, teachers got moved to the front of the line, so I'm hoping everybody's ready to line up for the jab. Community spread from school to homes. I think any parents that are concerned about community spread should have your children continue to distance learning. Maybe we can do something like, you know, shoot the, the distance learning camera into the classroom at the teacher as she's giving instruction at the board. You know, I'd like to see our schools open now and, and, and go with that broadcast idea or at the very least, open schools with AM in-class instruction and PM online instruction. Thank you.
Thank you, Jake. Next up will be Alicia. Alicia, when I unmute you, please tell us your name and go ahead. You're unmuted.
Hi, my name is Alicia Little and I have a son at John Sweat Elementary. I was born and raised in Martinez. I went to Los Honus, Martinez Junior High, and then Allhambray High School. When I myself decided to start a family, it was set in stone that we were going to buy a house in Martinez so that our children can follow in our footsteps and go through the Martinez Unified School District because we loved it so much. But now I feel like I'm being forced to pull my child and pay for him to get an education because my very own school district is failing me. More importantly, it's failing him. What is the holdup? If everyone else is doing it around us, why can't we? What exactly is the issues that the union has and why can't we get them rectified? This doesn't mean that I'm not thankful for the teachers. I know that they are working harder than ever, but this isn't working for anyone. Everyone is suffering. Our children, our teachers, our parents, our homes, our households. So many of us can't work because we are stuck home and our kids are, are not progressing. They need to be in the classroom. So I hope that you guys can figure it out with the unions and get our kids back in class as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Alicia. Next up will be Craig Lazaretti. Craig, go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, Craig.
Oh, thanks. So I've, on this issue all along, since the pandemic broke out last year, I really felt strongly that we need to follow the science and the facts. And, you know, early on in this, before the science and the facts and the evidence became clear, I really spoke out against those who were clamoring for what I thought was a premature opening. At this point, however, the facts have become very clear. There are thousands of schools open throughout the country and have been open for quite some time. And the evidence is And the evidence is crystal clear at this point that schools can operate safely during the pandemic. Many have. There have not been any super-spreader events, significant sources of community transition, transmission. It's, it's pretty clear at this point, and really, all the damage that's been done to our children from being out of school for a year, for a lot of our children, not all of them, but for a lot of them, and especially for special needs kids. This district should have been ready to move once we hit the metric that allowed schools to reopen. And, you know, just like when restaurants get the okay to reopen, when we hit the metrics and the safeguards are in place, and they've met the benchmarks, and they're ready to go the next day. You guys should have been ready to go for the next, the next day if our children's welfare really comes first. And you weren't. And it really doesn't surprise me because I've seen this type of thing in this district for years, where politics trumps what's in the public interest. And, you know, I think that, at this point, teachers have access to the vaccination. They've been moved up. They're getting access to the vaccination at the same time that frontline workers who've been putting themselves at risk for a close to a year are. Frontline grocery clerks are having to compete now with teachers working remotely for the vaccine. It's time for the, the resolve this issue, okay? It's time to make a commitment that when we hit the benchmarks that have been set by health officials, the schools will reopen. Otherwise, acknowledge that something else is at play here, and that the welfare and best interests of our students is not the number one issue. We're gonna have probably high school football played at Alhambra in a couple of weeks. At the same time, that classrooms at Alhambra will probably still remain closed, and maybe even our elementary schools. And what it measures is that, Sam, why is that the case? Is playing football safer from a COVID standpoint than social distancing inside a classroom with proper PPE and masks? No, the reason, the reason is pretty clear. It's, it's politics.
Thank you, Craig. Next up will be Donika. Donika, when I unmute you, go ahead and state your name for us, and you can... David, I'm getting the error message that Donika is using an older version of Zoom. How did we address that last time?
Okay, we'll have to move her temporarily over to panelist, and then we'll move her back.
Okay.
Hold on a second. Okay.
Donika, go ahead and address the board.
Actually, I think she's gone.
Okay. And next up will be Willie Mims.
Can you hear me?
Oh, is that Donika?
It is Donika. I'm so sorry. I didn't unmute on my side.
There you go.
Okay. All right. Hello, my name is Donika Caddiani, and I'm the parent of two Los Honas students. First, I want to just thank the school district, the school board, and the teachers. Thank you for all of your hard work for the entire year. I know it's unprecedented times. You guys are having to make a lot of decisions, and nobody's very happy with you, no matter what decision you make. Everybody feels like everybody's mad. So, thank you for everything that you're doing. And I also want to say that Martinez Unified School District teachers are amazing. My son has always struggled with reading. At the beginning of the school year, he was many levels below grade level for reading, and now he's at level. And it's because of his amazing teacher, even through distance learning, he, she has managed to put in the extra time and the extra work to get my child up to grade level reading. I understand the push for return, for those who want to go back. I know distance learning isn't working for everyone, but thank you for paving a road for people to return, but also the option for kids to remain in distance learning for those who it's working. Our families chose in distance learning, and we're grateful for the option. But the change and the possible change in the teacher would be a huge shakeup in an already uncertain year. I really, please, I ask that you do your, everything you can to help as many kids stay with their teacher as possible. Thank you, thank you, thank you to all the teachers out there who are working hard for your students. We appreciate you. I have faith in Martinez Unified School District. Thank you.
Thank you, Donika. Next up will be Willie Mims. Willie, go ahead.
Yes, to both the parents and the teachers, you know, my heart goes out to both of you. But I want to remind everybody that California has more COVID-19 cases than any state in the whole union, and that the priority should be the health and safety of everybody, both the teachers, the staff, and the students. So we can't, we can't overlook that. And I, and I would encourage everybody to proceed with caution before you make a hasty decision to send these kids back to school. Some of my concerns is that, what if a kid comes to school with a, a common cold, runny nose, a fever? What will you do? Send the kid back home? I mean, will you misdiagnose the kid and think that maybe he has or she has COVID-19? That's one, that's one of the things I've not heard anybody address. So I think that, just, just be careful and proceed with caution, because there's no, I mean, you know, it's, I operate from this old way of doing things. It's, it's always a best to be safe and not sorry. That is the critical thing right there. The, the last thing I wanted to say, and I wanted to address this to the board president. I asked a question earlier, and you dismissed my question. So, and, and I asked a question on an agenda item, and I have a right to get an answer from somebody, even though you may not want to answer it. But somebody, you should have asked some, asked somebody to answer my question. I was not speaking on public comments, but on an agenda item. And on an agenda item, the people have a right to know the, the people's business. So I want to make sure that, that you understand that. And that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Willie. Hannah Marie, do you have a comment for this agenda item?
Yes, thank you, Jeremy. I, I just wanted to follow up. It would be really helpful in the spirit of transparency of the district to really put out what districts have opened up. To my knowledge, there's a lot of misinformation being shared by the parent community, and that the neighboring, there's a lot of neighboring districts that have not opened up. And so it would be really helpful if you guys can put a comprehensive list together to, you know, many of us are watching what other school districts are doing, and that misinformation needs to be clarified so people don't think we're alone in this, not opening yet. And we're all striving to open up and get our kids back into class. And thank you to, for all of your leadership and all of the parents engaged in this issue. I think we're all striving for the same goal. It's a very complicated matter, but we, we need to resolve this by having accurate information. And saying that districts have opened is an inaccurate statement being made by parents. Thank you.
Thank you, Hannah Marie. Maria, your hand is still up. Did you have something else?
No, sorry. Let me lower that. There you go.
Elaine Mano, it looks like you put your hand up again. Do you have something else?
I did. I just wanted to comment back to the last speaker. That San Juan Unified has opened, Walnut Creek has opened, Walnut Creek Unified, Arinda and Lafayette have all opened for in-person hybrid learning. Just to be clear, I know that Mount Diablo Unified has not. That was it.
Okay, thank you, Elaine. And it looks like we haven't...
Jeremy, can I be, can I be heard on this? Because I know we have a lot of people who've spoken tonight. We normally don't let people come back and, and make comments, so I just don't want to set precedence that, that people can have extra opportunities to, to make their comment. That goes beyond, I think there's, there's a procedure, and that's what we need to do. And, and also, while, while we're at it, before we move too far, too much further, can we, Mr. Mim can, with regard to his question, we, we don't have to give response, or if, especially if we don't have staff to address it. But I would certainly recommend, he can, he can send me an email directly, or I think it was a question that Amy Black could probably address, if he wanted to send her an email with a specific question. We'll get him the information that he needs.
Okay, thank you, Deja.
Yeah.
Looks like we have one last. We had one last public comment, but we've got a couple more. Jeff Sherwin, go ahead.
Hi, Jeff Sherwin. I'm a parent of a sophomore at Alhambra High School. I just wanted to thank all the parents who've expressed their feelings about things and expressed things so eloquently. I just want to point out also that we did have that opportunity to open in the red back in October. And at that point, a bunch of local private schools did open, including De La Salle High School, Corondele High School, Breen High School. And they haven't had any resultant outbreaks or any incidents as a result. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. We have one last public comment. Deanna, when I unmute you, please tell us your name and go ahead and address the board.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Yana Cousins, I am a substitute in the Martinez School District. I've been teaching for over 30 years. I also have a child in the district. I want to say thank you to Casey, and I basically, she said what I wanted to say in a nutshell. And no one, I think we'd all agree, that no one is saying, "Let's go back to school unsafely." So I have a firefighter husband. I've been in the medical field. I want my kid to go back, but we all want them to go back safely. I don't think anyone I've talked to, I know no one has disagreed. So, that's pretty much all I have to say. So thank you for all who spoke on behalf of getting our kids back in, and it's all about back in safely.
Thank you, Deanna. And our last one, Carrie Poole. Carrie, go ahead.
Yes, hi. My name's Carrie Poole. I have a ninth grader and a sixth grader in the district. I'm also an educator in a neighboring district. And I'm excited to hear that there's a tentative agreement with the school board and the labor negotiators, so that is promising. My concern and disappointment comes in the fact that when the, when the county allowed for us to start opening, they, they had TK through sixth grade. And sixth grade in Martinez Unified was never considered. We were never sent out information about having our sixth graders possibly return before seventh and eighth graders. That would be a great test to get those kinks out as well, the smaller population, because they need to be back in school. And my one question I do have is, I know that you said that the letters would be going out for secondary at the end of the week, and we know that secondary cannot open yet. Elementary should be opened. The phase in TK2 should have already happened. We are now two weeks behind other districts, and then you're looking at 3.5, and you're, you're looking at a month, month and a half behind other districts that are of similar size. And so my question is, when that survey goes out to the secondary families, what kind of turnaround are you looking at to have that information? And will that information be shared with families about how many students choose to stay in distance learning and how many wish to return to a hybrid schedule? With the secondary Alhambra changing their schedule at the semester, it's a perfect hybrid schedule. So, my question is, when will that turnaround be for that survey? And so that when we are in the red, for the 10 days, we can make it a go for secondary. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Carrie. Looks like we are done with public comments. Julie, we had a lot of questions about negotiations with our labor partners, and I think it would be helpful to know for our folks to, to know what can and cannot be discussed about those negotiations. Is that something you can address?
Yes, I, I can. So our, I, I can hear the parent frustration about transparency, and I know, I, I understand. I'm acknowledging that frustration. However, our negotiations are confidential, and so trying, again, I want to thank our labor partners. Folks have been working collaboratively with us. I think there's been a lot of comments in terms of safety and who's opening and who's not, and why are they open and why are they not? And I hear it, and then again, and that, and that falls on, on my shoulders. I, I know students and families want me back in class, and I know there's students and families who want to stay at home. But unfortunately, I, I cannot share kind of the, the contents of negotiation because they are confidential. So I will, as soon as this, as soon as we get everything squared away, I am more than happy to kind of talk about the key salient points of, you know, our reopening plan and how we're all going through. But I understand people's frustrations, and I do just want to reiterate that our labor teams have been working very diligently to make sure that when we open, we are absolutely safe for students and staff and our families that are coming to drop off all the kiddos. So I, I thank you for letting me discuss that. And then, and again, too, and I just do want to acknowledge dealing with the numerous changes that have been coming our way, as, you know, you, you think you have one thing squared away, and then come Friday, there's a new, a new announcement. And then you think, yeah, one thing squared away, and you hear new something from CDC, because the federal government makes new recommendations. So we're trying to address all the concerns, and can hear the frustration. We all want our kiddos back, and, and we're gonna do it as quickly as we possibly can.
Great. Thank you, Julie. So now we get to move on to Agenda Item 15, which is Public Comments. So, under Government Code 54954.3, members of the public have the right to address the board on any matter within the board's jurisdiction. However, the board may not take action on any non-agenda item. Individual speakers will be allowed three minutes to address the board. 20 minutes have been allocated for this portion of the agenda. Additional time is allowed at the end of the meeting if there was not enough time to speak during public comments. So... I'll see if there's any public comments at this point. Looks like there's a few. Craig Lazaretti, you'll be up first. Todd, you'll be second. Go ahead, Craig.
Thanks, President Genelli. I've spoken over the years, you know, some of you know, an issue that I care very deeply about is the issue of gun violence and safety. And one thing that my group I work with, the Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense in America, has been trying to do with school districts is to really focus on the issue of state safe storage. And I think Superintendent, State Superintendent Thurman, sent out a letter to all superintendents throughout the state about this issue of safe storage of firearms, and asking that superintendents of school districts inform parents and families of the importance of safe storage of firearms. And as I'm sure you're all aware, from time to time, we hear these tragic stories of unlocked, unsecured firearm resulting in tragedy. And, and so we're, we're hoping that all school districts and all superintendents will be sending out letters to families emphasizing the need to properly secure and store firearms. As you know, many, many families, residents in our areas across the country own firearms. There's been a huge spike in firearm purchases during the pandemic for various reasons. You know, you probably know, when we take our children to, to the doctor, or we go out to the doctor ourselves, one of the standard questions that gets asked now is, "Do you have firearms in the house? Are they secured?" The issues around depression and mental illness and mental health during the pandemic have been exacerbated. A lot of people don't realize that two-thirds of all firearms deaths in the nation every year are suicides, two-thirds. And we focus so much on gun homicides and mass shootings, but the vast majority of, of gun deaths are suicides. So I just ask, I know you've got so much on your plate right now, trying to work through the school reopenings and the pandemic issues, but I would just ask a very simple thing to do in your communication with parents and families is to send out that letter that Superintendent Thurman asked be shared with family members about the importance of securing firearms in the home. Thank you.
Thanks, Craig. Todd, go ahead.
Great. Thanks, Jeremy. One item, not related to reopening, but one item I'd like to highlight, and in fairness, I have raised... Great. Thanks, Jeremy. Um, one item, um, not related to reopening, but one item I'd like to highlight, and in fairness, I have raised it with Matt Chamberlain. But I'm hoping that the executive committee or executive uh board um can make a decision prior to the next meeting. Um, we've got a class of twenty twenty-two is in the middle of their selection of classes for next year. And one of the graduation requirements that they should have been set to be able to begin was their community service requirement. And for those of you that know me, you know that I am a huge advocate of community service. But unfortunately, the opportunities are minimal. Um, some would argue, um, there are a lot of companies that are actually um in discouraging physical community service and encouraging virtual um inside of our own community. Um, a lot of our high school students actually satisfy their hours through volunteering for our PTAs, which are operating um virtually at this time. So I'm hoping that we can um maybe take some swifter action and get a decision ahead of um two weeks from tonight. Hopefully, um, to be able to relieve some pressure on our graduating class of twenty twenty-two and their need for community service to be able to graduate. Thank you.
Thanks, Todd. Um, it looks like we don't have any other public comments at this point in time, so we'll move on to our next agenda item, which is our consent calendar. The gen item sixteen, approval of the consent calendar means that all items listed here under are adopted by a single motion. Unless a member of the board or the superintendent requests that any such item be removed from the consent calendar and voted upon uh separately. Uh, Julie, are there any changes to the consent calendar? Julie here still?
She doesn't look like she is. Maybe we
She's having a problem. Um, she's got her computer froze and she can't get back in. She's trying one more thing and I'm trying to log on a second computer to get her back in. So if you need something, I'll either go down the hall or I can help you and I can answer it. Okay? So, sorry.
Helen, typically there's no changes to the consenting calendar, but are you aware of
Changes to the consent consent calendar. Thank you.
Okay. Um, any questions or comments from the board about the consent calendar?
I actually had a question and I, I think um Helen's the right person for me to ask it to. I had a question about the ratification of con- uh contracts with regard to do we pass control? And uh, I, I've looked at the contract. I also wanted to just call out, it says um approval of the service agreement is replacing uh integrated pest management. And Helen, am I correct that integrative pest management doesn't refer anything to our program or the way that we do integrative pest management? It's actually just replacing a company that we used to employ to do the same work?
That is correct.
Okay.
Several reasons we chose to look at alternative vendors, um that maybe our service would be a, a little bit more in line the um with the agreement that we made from another
Great. Yeah, when I, when I saw that on the agenda, I thought, oh no, we're making changes to our actual integrated pest management program, but it with this in, in fact, is just one of the service providers that helps facilitate what we, what we want to continue doing um to reduce pesticides on our campuses.
Yes.
Great. Thank you. No other questions from me.
Any other questions from the board about this? Okay, we'll open it up for public comments. Any public comments on agenda item sixteen? Doesn't look like it, so we'll bring you back to the board for action. Uh, do we have a motion?
A motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we'll start with the student vote. Robin?
Aye.
Uh, full board, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you. And we'll move on to uh gen item seventeen, which are items for board consideration or action. The first one up is seventeen point one, which is the adoption of resolution number twenty twenty-one dash thirteen. Support of Women's History Month. This is an action item. Um, and Amy Black can refresh us about uh, the, the resolution.
Yes, thank you. So bringing uh forward to the board, action item resolution twenty twenty-one thirteen. Uh, it's an observa- uh an observation for Women's History Month. Um, it would be, we'd also have the opportunity to come um to commemorate um activities and um celebrate uh contributions of women um in his throughout history. I know that um there's been comment in the past by board members. It would be nice that it would all integrated um throughout our history, just like Black History Month. That hopefully will continue to work to being um at, at a point in time that uh it's just part of our vernacular. Um, but we're still um making great strides to close that gap.
Okay, any questions, comments from the board? Yeah, let's open up for public comments. Any public comments on agenda item seventeen point one? Doesn't look like it. So we'll bring you back to the board for action.
Move to approve resolution twenty twenty-one dash thirteen.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We'll start with the student vote. Robin?
Aye.
Full board, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Excellent. Now we get to move on to agenda item seventeen point two, which is approval of the college and career readiness coordinator position. Let me begin, this is Amy Black. Go for it.
Yes, thank you. So um, last meeting I brought for information, some data around our Vicente Martinez High School, um including um their eligibility for comprehensive uh support improvement plans or CSI plan. And with that them being identified also comes money attached to um supporting the goals and improvement plan that are outlined in our CSI that was approved by uh the board in December. Um, so we received monies for the two thousand nineteen twenty school year, and then we also are receiving monies for the two thousand twenty twenty-one school year. These monies need to be spent specifically in supporting uh the goals outlined in CSI as well as what's outlined in their SIPSA and WASC. Um, so we have started that process through our professional development and um learning communities, and we'll be launching embedded coaching uh to support the academic and increase the rigor. Um, another component of Vicente Martinez is also looking at providing internships and um college and career pathways for our students. It's a role that um was, I think, historically uh offered in Martinez through other grant fundings. Um, and uh, we now with the grant money for CSI, we would like to bring this position back for the next uh year or two. So it's a temporary position. I know there's been some question as to administrative versus a teacher position or a classified position um from the last meeting. It was really important to ask to not have limits in terms of um availability. So typically with our uh CSA and our um MEA membership, there's specific contracts around their working hours. Um, and this really needs to be a position that goes beyond um the school day. We're gonna be starting um building partnerships, internship, being able to go to uh companies. Um, envision, I was so wonderful to hear Suzanne Murphy's, all that her partnerships with the adult schools. So looking at what we can do to partner with the adult school as well. And oftentimes, when you're working with uh industry and college um and junior college, you need to have the flexibility to work um on the weekends and the evenings and the afternoon, also coordinating um and advising principals is a, a vision for this position. Um, and that would require administrative role um as well as parent education and student education that would uh require beyond the school day. So um, really, the intention is taking the next year, two year in this position to really build out a comprehensive CTE um and um internship program. Um, down the line, it would be nice um to be able to, if we have monies available to LCAP and we can look at um reallocating the position um for a different um labor group. Uh, at this time, though, we really felt that when we analyze that program and the needs to really make it a, a solid program. Um, we felt that a coordinator position was necessary for us to build it out completely.
Thank you, Amy. Any questions, comments from the board?
I had a question about the funding source. Is it, is it ongoing funding that's available for this position? And if not, what is, what is the length of time we're committing to?
So we'd like to commit to two years. It's not ongoing funding, although we were uh looking at possibly doing a part, like we could do some funding at LCAP so we can open it up to Alhambra High School. So that'll be a conversation that we have in our LCAP committee. If that's something that we wanted to have a portion so that allows that person to also support our comprehensive high school, but the position is purely CSI money for uh Vicente Martinez students.
Amy, you, um, you answered, I was gonna ask you about if, if making this a, a teacher position had been considered. So I think you answered that. I just, um, I'm, I'm a little new around here and I, I think I'm probably not the only one that sometimes doesn't know what all the acronyms mean. So I'm wondering if you could just help me with, you use SIPSA, WASC and CSI. Can you tell us what those are?
Yeah, so SIPSA is a single plan for student achievement. So it's the annual plan that is um housed at a site council. So school, each school has a school site council and they're required to go through uh the goals and data for each individual school site. They're also required to align their goals to our LCAP. Um, so there has to be like um uniformity or consistency with the goals. Uh, WASC is the Western, Julie, Western accreditation.
Their association of schools and colleges. And you're right, and they accredit schools to be able to allow kids to go on to college.
Yeah, so our, our high schools are required to go through a rigorous WASC pro- uh process. Every, it depends on the school and the goals. Um, Alhambra, I think they got an unprecedented seven years. I don't have Matt on, oh, Matt is on there. He is a which is really unusual typically. I think it's a three-year accreditation with a mid uh cycle review. Um, again, it aligns to their school cycles and then they do or um a needs assessment and full data analysis and then the goals are aligned specifically for those school sites. So it's another uh accreditation and allows them um to be recognized as a accredited school by uh colleges in the state of California.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, we'll open it up for public comments. Brenda, go ahead.
So I am wondering, I'm thinking a position would be about two hundred thousand a year. And I'm wondering how you will evaluate that to make sure you got your monies worth. So what are the goals and what will be the specific things that we will see so that we go, yeah, you know, that was a great way to spend that amount of money? Um, I'm wondering if a center will be, um, a career center will be established for both Alhambra and Vicente. And um just basically want to know more about sustainability, because if it's going to work for two years, are we going to make sure that we continue to offer this benefit to our students after the grant is gone?
Okay, thank you. Uh, Brenda? Do we have any other public comments on the gen item seventeen point two? It doesn't look like it. Amy, was there anything you wanted to clarify about the, the position that would address? Uh, okay.
Well, I mean, typically I don't respond to, respond to public comment, but did you want me to respond to her comment?
No, it's okay. Um, the, we'll bring you back to the board for action. We have a motion.
Can I, can I just have some clarification? And just, can we have a little bit more um board discussion on this? Cause I, I mean, I, I have a concern. I have a concern about a position that we're only creating for two years and I, we've kind of been down this road before, especially when it comes to CTE and its sustainability. Um, and I, I mean, I would love to have this hit, a, a program like this and obviously a well-qualified person uh get a program up and running, but I think the reality is it takes a year and to get it going and then probably takes a couple of years. And so um, are there, are there grants out there? Um, and I, I understand we can take, we can allocate it through, through LCAP. Um, but it is, it is a concern that I have. Um, I think it's a wonderful position and, and, and obviously something that we could would, would is wonderful for our students and to expand it would be great, but I, I have concerns about sustainability of this kind of an expense. Um, and so I, I just wanted to at least share that with the board discussion.
And, and if I can jump into, absolutely hear your concern. Um, in the past, there was a grant, college and career readiness grant. And so that's how a lot of the CTE programs, the college and career counselors came about. Um, there was funding, I think it was about hmm four years ago and was a three-year grant. And so that's how a lot of programs got established um back in the day. And then, of course, like you said, the funding runs out and just in previous experiences, um, what kind of other districts had done is we did dedicate that um position in the LCAP completely. Um, and we were still looking for grants. And if there was way to take Perkins money potentially and see if we could use some of the Perkins money to uh fund some of the college and career readiness positions or things along those lines that we wanted. We were trying to see if there was ways that we could balance that. But um, kind of just in the past, and like I said, this position is so important. Um, and, and just trying to get something up and running. I, I think with the new college and career in college and career readiness indicator, the sooner that we can get the kiddos kind of two connected to the junior colleges to taking concurrent classes, to getting into the workforce and completing CTE courses. I think that's gonna make, make a huge jump, not only for obviously um kids getting to the next level and their post-secondary plans, but also helping us a lot on our dashboard and our data uh looking at that. Um, that's something we can absolutely look into is additional grants um and keep our eyes on that. But you're right, it is a position and I understand the concern with sustainability.
And if I can jump in a little bit, when we get our LCFF funding, we get extra eight hundred and something dollars per K through three student to keep class sizes at twenty-four. We also get extra money at nine through twelve for CTE um to help with pathways. And we haven't, let's say traditionally, that money hasn't gone in that direction. Um, but as we realign our goals with our brand-new LCAP after, because we had to keep the same ones through the last few years, we can make sure that we focus where we need to focus for sustainability for college and career pathways, because it is an, an important lacking. Um, it's an important thing that's lacking right now in our district, I can say. An important
Are we gonna have data that we can measure from where we're at now?
It'll be
a year from now and then two years from now?
Mm-hmm. The state gathers that data. It's mandatory. We have these programs. And um, the, like I said, we're not there and it shows in our dashboard.
Yeah, so actually, that's a great question. So um, when we, and I'll bring that to the board and it'd also be a, a significant discussion in our LCAP meeting. So we're gonna dive deeply into our college and career readiness indicators that breaks down our CTE pathway, including AP. There's a number of indicators, so you'll see how we are um clearly not on track um in meeting those requirements by the state. And so that data supports us realigning our LCAP for what um we're gonna look at as more of a graduate profile. Um, so then this position would um align with that uh long-range goal as well as we'll have direct dashboard indicators um that will show us over time, hopefully, that we see a positive trend by investing in, in those kind of programs.
And one more thing, and just aside from the college and career pathway, I look at things like this, these opportunities for kids, especially our most at-risk kids to have more of the um hands-on experience or, or being more engaged into their education and their program and their future. If they see a little bit of a light at the end of the tunnel or what they're doing has a different kind of meaning other than a, a, you know, a textbook. So I, I, I would, I would only um not just hope, because that's not a strategy. But I can only imagine that by implementing these things, the engagement of some of our harder-to-reach students might increase. That's, that's my gut feeling, so.
Okay, any other questions, comments from the board? Okay, this is an action item. Do we have? Okay, this is an action item. Do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
I will second it. I don't think Robin can vote on this one, right? So, sorry, Robin. We'll bring you back to the full board for action. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Thank you very much, Amy. Now we get to move on to seventeen point three, which is our twenty twenty one CSBA Delegate Assembly election information. This is an action item. Julie is presenting. Go ahead, Julie.
Okay, thank you. On this, we we discussed this at our last meeting. And the board is asking to vote for no more than three candidates for the CSBA Delegate Assembly. And so I will open this, turn this back over to you to see if there are three candidates that you would like to put forward as a board for the assembly.
One of the candidates is one of our MUSD employees, so I I think that we should support her.
I would agree. AJ would be great on it. She wants to take on another project. I think that's fantastic. I actually, I thought, so so the two people at the bottom. Meredith Mead and and Richard Severi are the incumbents. Yeah, but I did want to at least, I was, I was interested in and looking at through Dow Johnson. I don't know if anyone had looked at his resume. He's, it looks like he's new to Brentwood Union. I know I've always liked. You know, supporting districts that have similar, similar schools that we have. And I liked his, I liked his background. So that was another person that I at least wanted to. Share an interest in having everyone consider.
I would support that. I actually have met, I actually, I believe that that it's a female. But I could, I could be wrong, but I I I think that I've, I've been in. Some local meetings and met her and and she does seem very engaged and very qualified, so I would be supportive of that.
Okay, do we have any comments about? Sounds like we got support for for two folks. Any? Any comments about any of the other candidates? We got to pick three. So we, so we'd have two. What about Meredith, Richard, or Dimitrio? Anybody have comments about? Any of them?
Dr. Senor, to clarify, did you say we can know more than three? Does that mean we're we are obligated to pick three or? It just says no more than three. So if you want to put forward two, we can put forward two. You can't have four.
Can we open it up to public comment in case there's any public comment on this for our consideration?
Sure, let's open this up for. Public comments. Does anybody have public comments on agenda item seventeen point three? It doesn't look like we have any takers for public comment on seventeen point three. So we'll bring you back to us. The. I don't know, I liked, I liked Meredith's application. Background as well.
Richard Severi is an attorney, so I mean, there's plenty of attorneys to go around too. I would, I would support that. Unfortunately, I don't have any personal. I I don't, I don't have any personal knowledge of of anyone else who who's there. So I would, I would assume that both of the representatives. Have have done an adequate, if not better, job in the last two years. But I think Lafayette School District, they're going to be familiar with some of the similar populations that we have. And would probably. Provide good representation for some of our needs as well.
Okay, do we, do we want to make a motion for three candidates?
I'll do it. So I I would recommend candidates Jensen. Core and Mead.
I will second the motion. I believe Robin can vote on this. Robin, soon vote?
I.
Back to full board, all in favor of those three candidates? Say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Excellent.
Thank you.
Now we get to move on to agenda item seventeen point four. Which is our annual revisions to the comprehensive school safety plans. This is an action item and Stacy is presenting.
Thank you, President Jannelli. Each school year, the California Department of Education requires every school site to update and amend their comprehensive school safety plan. With their school site council, campus staff, administration, and law enforcement. So this particular plan is designed to address safety issues while focusing on strategies to prevent educate and resolve incidents. That can happen on each campus. So I would like to personally thank Lieutenant Sal from the Martinez Police Department for carefully reviewing each of these plans. In order to ensure our procedures comply with best practices. I would also like to thank our site administrators and their site staff, along with our school site council. Parents and other individuals who contributed to this revision process for each individual school site plan. So pending your approval tonight, these plans would be posted on our website. But I do want to note that there are specific parts of the plans that pertain to confidential or tactile responses. In emergency situations that would not be posted on the website, and that is to ensure the safety of all. So this is an action item, so I do appreciate your consideration this evening. Are there any questions?
Any of the board members have questions about the safety plans? Doesn't look like it. We'll open it up to public comments. Any public comments for agenda item seventeen point four? Doesn't look like it. We'll bring you back to the board for. Action. Do we have a motion?
Can we vote on, we vote on all of them at one time? Okay, so I moved to approve the school site safety plans.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We'll. Student vote, Robin?
I.
Full board, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Next on our. Agenda is item eighteen, which is additional comments from the public. We don't need that. Agenda item number nineteen, or comments from the superintendent, board members in future agenda items. We'll, we'll go around the board members first. Annie, you have anything?
I don't. I think that we've said a lot tonight, so I'm good.
Deidra?
I think I'll, I'll follow Annie's guidance on that and and keep us moving. Thank you, though. And thanks, everyone. Thank you, everyone, for being brave enough to have your voices heard. I I too can hear a lot of frustration. I I feel them. So I just want to thank everybody for their patience, not only for our meeting, but also just in general. And I I look forward to to good news very soon as well.
Okay, Courtney?
I don't have anything tonight. Thanks.
Robin, do you have anything from our student perspective?
I'd just like to say I appreciate all the hard work that's going into this. I, again, I know it's a tough place for all of us and there are some of us who are doing better than others. And and so just thank you again, and I appreciate the patience from all of our students who are trying to make things work and communicating with each other. And I look forward to continuing to move forward with this.
Well said, Robin. Thank you. Julie, do you have anything else for us tonight?
I always hate following Robin. Robin, good job. Yes, and I do want to thank Robin too. Robin mentioned this a number of times in the, in the student report. But basically it said that tomorrow night we have our next session with Dr. Watson, so want to make sure that you can attend that tomorrow night as well. She's fabulous and there's some really great discussions that are happening there. And I also want to thank and congratulate all our educators of the year. Congratulations and just kind of call out to everybody. I wish I could have an educator of the year award for everybody. This year has been so rough and people have gone above and beyond. And I mean, I know despite the frustration, you could hear parents say, you know, but our teachers are doing this and they're doing that. Just again, my heart is so full and appreciative of everything that's going on right now. I appreciate all the work that everybody's doing, classified, certificated. You guys are doing amazing work and and we're going to get through all this. So want to thank everybody and thank the team and thank the board for all their hard work. So that's it.
Okay, I I don't have anything tonight. I just want to say thank you for everybody and their patience. It was a long, a long evening tonight. And I know we're working hard to to get our MOUs done and everybody back on campus when we can. And with that, we can adjourn the meeting this evening. Our next meeting is March eighth, just as a reminder. So I want to thank everybody tonight and we can adjourn the meeting at nine.